Evening everyone, welcome to the Monday, May 15th, 2023 meeting of the town board. We are all assembled here, so we have work for our first in the business session to confirm that we don't have any modifications to the town. You've received Jim's meeting notes, have a chance to review them. Any questions or comments?
I will accept.
Thank you, Edna, second please.
Second.
Thanks, Greg, all those in favor?
Aye.
I oppose, extension, motion carries. You've received draft made first minutes, and you all had a chance to review it. Any comments, questions, corrections? Motion to accept. Thank you, Michael, second please. Second. Thanks, Edna, all those in favor?
Aye.
I oppose, extension, motion carries. Correspondence announcement. You have received, I think, probably mostly today, correspondence from HAPAC in response to the visit my local Zaren and his subsequent report. And you've also received some information about a request from the town board for an ODA, which will require public hearings on the part of the town board. The town board is the entity that would have to decide on helping develop an area. So I would encourage you both to take a look at that correspondence that came into you, and we will open it up for any discussions regarding both of them at a subsequent meeting, unless you have questions about either of them right now. Is everybody familiar with what an ODA is?
Vaguely.
Vaguely. Jim, do you want to just give a super high view of it so that they can read it better and find?
Well, based on the application materials that were submitted, because I have not personally dealt with an ODA in all my years of being a planner. Essentially, in DRC town law prohibits the issuance of building permits for structure on a lot unless the street or highway giving access is shown on a plan by the planning board or meets other criteria. The subject of purpose is to make sure that suitable access to a lot is provided for and built on. It's permissioned by some amendments for property that's internal, that doesn't have frontage on the road itself. So it requires an ODA from approval from the town board. And then I think he's probably going to us.
That's the way he can't come to us until he has established that, so this is preferatory to coming to us.
Isn't that like the public road access?
Yeah, public road.
Public road. So if there's private roads, does it still go through there?
That's something we're all figuring out exactly. So I think what he's proposing is the driveway that's there provides that access. But in order for that to be considered legal, I guess the town board has to state that that is the case and they allow it, and then depending on subdivision. We have a couple of things going on, going to be going on for the next couple of months, eventually.
And I think the town board has set two public hearings for this. So there's two, one and then I'll follow up. Okay. That being said, I don't have anything else to present. Anyone else?
We only have the June 20th meeting, we're ready on it because I was checking what happened.
The June 20th, you will recall, because there are elections taking place here, it has been scheduled for the library, is that correct?
Downstairs.
Craig will set with that.
At the Star Library.
At the Star Library downstairs, the entrance to that is from the lower level at the back of the building. And Gretchen will see that it's properly known as. So anybody who's here tonight, and you will be carried over to the June 20th meeting, which is Tuesday, because 19th is Juneteenth. So we have two changes. We have a change of date and a change of location. So if you end up on that date, you will be relocated to the Star Library. Thanks, Gretchen. First off, we have two new applications this evening. The first is Carmine Regenero, 5 Morton Road, Site Plan and Special Use Permit, proposed addition. So you may come up and show us what you'd like to do.
These are the requirements.
What's that?
These aren't the most recent plans. These are the old plans.
Building Department's mission set 230309.
230503.
I'll have to take orders.
Is that it?
That's it, that's the right set.
Okay.
Give you download it. Can you sit before?
No, I've got it. Sorry.
So I'm not, apologies, I thought this meeting was scheduled for Zoom, it's my mistake. Our architect had a very intention of representing us today, so I'm not exactly sure what that sort of format is and what is required, if there's an introduction or any kind of review of what our last meeting was like and what updates have been made, but I may be wrong.
Well, I think we would want you to start with, as you came for us in pre-conference.
Yeah.
And we talked about that. And so I think you need to bring everybody on the board of this, about where you started and where you're at. I'm noticing that you've got some new, in the past you had both existing photographs and renderings, but I don't see any renderings in this package other than the elevations.
Oh, okay.
Is that correct?
Yeah, I think in the plans currently there are no, I think previously we'd done like a preview.
Photo simulation.
Sort of simulation that Jim suggested doing something like that. I mean, the sort of summary of this is that we came to the pre-conference meeting with a set of plans that I think, and I'm sure the board thought, we had taken too far in many directions, more than developing them with the architect and spending probably too much time on those plans before bringing them to the pre-conference meeting. We'd spent probably way too much time fleshing something out before getting the planning board's input on what we're intending to do. That said, we took all the notes and the suggestions to heart. We spent as much time as we could in the window that we had before this meeting to revise the plans and sort of bring them into what we thought the planning board might like to see and what we would like to have. And again, we're a growing family, there's not a lot of room in the home currently, so we're looking to expand essentially to whatever limits we could under the historic guidelines that were interesting among the sort of bullet points that we listed in the emails. Again, I regret that the architect isn't here walking through this, but essentially you'll see that there's a new addition proposed on the north side of the property, that's the current structure there, this is the proposed addition. What we tried to do with the architect is try to minimize the height of that addition as much as possible and allow for that space to accommodate a second floor. Let's see, we did as much as we could without, and we're also really trying to preserve the character, but also limit costs by private design here. Do you have any consideration?
So we heard the feedback that you gave us in the last meeting, and we radically changed the plans to meet the historic guidelines. So we have a clambered exterior and mountain windows that match the existing house. This addition is also set back from the front of the house, so it doesn't merge with the front. And it's hard to tell in this image, but it is back from the front of the house so that the front of the house is preserved, so that you see it as an autonomous unit. It also meets, I think it was, was it Jim who raised the question of setbacks? I'm not sure of the, in the last meeting, so the setback is larger than it previously was. It's a 10 foot setback.
And larger than the minimum suggested setback? And I think if you go to the first page of the plans too, I think it gives you a better idea of where this addition sits on the property. So if you zoom in here, you'll see that there's a, just given the sort of grade of the land, it is quite obscured from the roadside and covered, you know, to a large extent by this set of woods here.
So you won't be able to see it from the road. It's kind of going to be.
Little bit, right?
Thank you. Here. So it would be behind these shrubs and trees, and very hard to kind of see from the road.
Just thought you could point that out. Aside from that, again, I'm not quite sure where to go with the overview here, but if you maybe walk through the plans themselves, it certainly will come up.
We really tried to respond to your feedback in a robust way and come with a very different set of plans that still meets our needs for space. We're also under the 2,300 limit for an addition, or for total space, total for the house and the addition. And while also trying to meet our needs for additional spaces in this quite small house for three weeks.
I apparently looked at the wrong plans before tonight, so you can disregard my comment in the memo. But I think the general gist still stands that most of the conversation, I think, tonight regarding the applications, just the size and scale, you know, planning board's consideration of size and scale of the addition to the existing house and other things in Rock Cliff, as well as the general design and how it fits in in the handling of Rock Cliff. When it comes to the setback, what I said before, there were seven feet proposed, and I just didn't know how you'd get machinery back in there to really do any work potentially on the side of the house in this seven foot space. So I said maybe they want to look at something a little bigger, and some of the setbacks on adjacent properties are larger. But I was just concerned about the ability to kind of get around it without actually infringing on the neighbor's property on that line. So I just suggested maybe a larger setback on that one side. But other than that, you know, HAPAC input will be required. I don't know if somebody can, you know, landscaping and lighting plans, but if there's any exterior lighting that's shown on the plans, they should be shown on here.
Okay. They haven't shown, our intention was to basically take the same pictures that are on the existing house and put them on the new structure that has.
Which are darks dark.
You'll need to attach, you'll need to attach photos or something like that.
Yeah, remember making this statement last time we submitted plans?
I don't know, I don't know, looking at this, I mean, if it had, you know, if you have, Jim still had a little few other elevations. Yeah, if you've got other, if you're connecting the garage with pathways or any other thing that you might be lighting or any landscaping around a kind of building, all that would need to be added to the plans as well. Other planning board members, questions, comments? Can we go back to the site plan? So the roof of the garage?
This garage was reviewed sixteen months ago, maybe?
Has that been constructed?
Yes.
And that's larger than the one that had been?
Yeah.
So what do you end up with in terms of bedrooms?
Same number of bedrooms, one additional bathroom, right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
But the larger primary bedroom that, that, one of the bedrooms in this house has no closet and it's very, very, very small. It's been used as an office. So the idea is to create a larger bedroom that can be used as such with closet space.
And if you look to the neighbor, how close is your neighbor to you?
The neighbor here is probably off, their house is probably up here in this area. I mean, maybe, yeah. Yeah.
And it's very wooded between the houses. It's woods.
Yeah, we can't see our neighbors proper from there.
Oh, thank you.
About three quarters of the acre?
Yes.
We can't actually see their house in summer, but during their sight lines to their house.
Is there any clearing that needs to happen for this addition to be executed?
No, there's a precipice bush.
The precipice bush is going to go.
In fact, there's no grass there.
Are we planning more numbers? Questions? The roof will remain the same as the original?
Yes.
If this is now crackwork, then it will be matching the existing house?
Yeah, our point is that at the same side, we're across from.
And retaining the color or are we changing it?
That's a good question. We are either maintaining the color or we are going to paint the house white. We have another house in White that we're doing white. But it also has a silver, tin roof, and it's all white, white window frames and white ceiling.
If there are any other questions or comments, particularly on draft procedural resolution?
For the four considerations tonight, draft procedural resolution for Site Plan and Special Use Permit and Town Bill Chapter 125 for the addition and associated work of 5 Morton Road in the RC zoning district, and RC overlay, accepting the applications, putting documents as added before they're due by the planning board. Advisors in the public classifying this as type 2 under SEGR. We will provide this to the CAP, WAC, and HAPAC. So we sent to Dutchland Department of Planning for review of their requirements, and the Tuesday public hearing for June 20th at 6:15, and get the two planning board numbers to the site.
Okay. Craig, you want to go?
Yeah, I'll go.
I'll go with Craig. Okay. May I have the motion to accept draft procedural resolution? Move by Lee, second please.
Sean.
Thank you, Sean, all those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose, extension, motion carries. Craig or Edna will be in touch with you, schedule a second.
Great, great.
Thank you. Thank you for your feedback. Thank you.
You're welcome. The second review application decision is granted, Dana Page, Site Plan and Special Use Permit, to add the deck for the curb block, replace an existing addition, and bay window bump out to the second story.
Good evening. I'm Kelly Leckles with KARC Plan Consultants, and I present the applicant Dana Garrett Page with the check of this application. This is an existing structure. It's about 1.23 acres, 22 Hudson Street. The parcel is in the RN zoning district, and then it's in the local overlay district. And so we're here before you tonight to seek Site Plan and Special Permit approval for the predominantly exterior improvements to this existing structure. So as shown on that second page, there are no modifications to the exterior footprint of this structure, so there's no increase in the setbacks, no decrease in the setbacks. The only exterior modification to the actual footprint and all the exterior walls of the building is a second story bump out, a second story bay window that again does not protrude further than the first floor of the existing structure. So there really isn't any modification to the footprint. All the improvements are predominantly exterior painting, improvement of the windows, gutters and so forth, improvements to the porches to bring this project to warrant to the historical context of this setting. The architect is here, and she can go over some of those improvements and modifications if we'd like her to. We did provide you with, we did have the work session, so thank you for your comments, and I hope that we addressed all of those. We have made changes and provided you with the aerial photographs and photographs of the existing building, provided you with the colors and the materials and all the lighting for the structure. So if you'd like, she can go over those exterior improvements.
Thank you.
Which page do you like up?
We can start with the elevation. These are the, I believe these are the existing. And the existing shutters are in really bad shape. Many of them are already off. And so our original intention is not to replace them. People don't use shutters anymore though, but if you think it's historically appropriate too, we could. The windows, we're keeping the double hungs, we're just replacing them with 400, I mean, I see it's architectural spheres, Andersons, which are the most historically accurate, I would say, for double hung windows. There's a couple areas where we would be, instead of doing the double hung, we're going to make encasements, which were in a kitchen, where taking a bedroom and turning it into a kitchen. Where there would be a scarring left, because the windows would be shorter, we'd be, could we go to the proposed addition? modifications? There we go. So where there would be scarring, we'd be, so those new windows, case windows would be here and here. And so where that residual area is left, we'd be putting flower boxes there. We're trying to clean up a really icky former addition that has some really bad stucco, which isn't historically common material in Rock Cliff area. So instead, we're proposing putting a board and baton siding, which is very common for the actual township, village. In the former addition that we're cleaning up, we are proposing casing of windows. For the most part, it's on the side of the house, which nobody could see but the one neighbor. And that would be the primary bedroom wing and bathroom. We're keeping the existing columns. We're going to clean them up and repaint them, an accent color. The brick has some troubles that we're going to clean up, and we would like to paint the brick instead of have those repairs shown. The existing roof, the existing main body of the house is here, and so all the elements are staying. The porch roof, we're proposing doing a standing seam roof, as well on the former addition. There's a small area here where you see the new foundation. That had a very poor kind of scab on, I think it was an existing porch that they filled in that was terribly inadequate as far as a porch, even a porch. So we've incorporated that space into this addition, and in the center of it, on the second floor, we're proposing popping out a window bay. And a window bay is also a very common element in town, in Rockback Township, and as well in the Village of Rock Cliff. On the front of it, on this former addition, we're putting a balcony net. Also, there's several properties, I've got two here within the village itself, 10 Charles Street, 11 Shetzel Avenue, that incorporates the balcony net. It kind of, kind of, we're trying to engage the house into the property. And it would be seen, it is something that would be seen coming up the road. As with the side of the window bay. And let's see, oh, we are, we are making some corrections to some stairs that are terribly failing, some concrete stairs going up to the porch. So while we were at it, if we look at the plan here. Yeah, would you look at the existing plan so that you can see where the stairs were? Here we go. Just pull up a little bit.
I'll see the other one.
Here we go. Here we go. So right now, the stairs are here, and they're concrete, and they're in terrible shape. Dana, sweet Dana, had the idea that the stairs should, since this is going to be now the kitchen, if we're taking them off anyway, we want to put them a little closer to the driveway with groceries coming in. And just seems more correct to put them right here. So we're taking these stairs and putting them here. And since we now have that opening, there's a, there's a passageway, if you just zoom, go, yeah, here we go. There's a lower passageway that you can actually access the basement here. So it seemed appropriate and kind of smart, since we had that opening now, to then put stairs. stairs coming down. And if you go, we'll longer here, we'll just stay here. We also no longer need this exterior stairway down to the, down to the basement. So we would be taking that icky Bilbo doorway and filling that in with the landscaping bed. So I think that would be an improvement as well. Let's see. We're organizing the first floor, kind of looked at it holistically, which would be, which would be best for the house and to kind of move things around. So we're now putting the kitchen over here, the living room stays the living room. This icky bathroom is no longer really needed, and so that's going to be a dining room. This is the primary bedroom wing now. You still come in, if we go to the plan, the new plan? Little down? Okay, here we go. So we're still coming in the back door here as a mud entrance. We're still keeping this entrance. So the front of the house, the, what everybody can see from the road essentially remains the same. We're just cleaning it up and hopefully making it better. So we have a more open plan now. We're taking a solid wall away and opening these rooms up, and creating a primary wing. And we're not doing anything to the foundation, other than this new staircase coming down here. We are proposing putting an outdoor living space. Right now, there's just some steps coming up to this dangerously, oh, dangerous addition in the back. That's it. Yeah, and, and, yes, and we're kind of making a reference to the renovation of the main house on the property, with the standing seam roof and the flagstone path, which is coming from the property. There's a lot of flagstone on the property, so we're incorporating that with a pathway to the parking area that's already existing. But we are making improvement on the back with a pergola and extending, creating actually a back deck, that again, nobody can see, other than the pages and the neighbor. And creating, we're extending the angle of this roof into a pergola for some sun shade. And this is a little balcony net coming up here, we are extending the roof over that, just kind of give it a little charm. And, anything else?
The only thing I was going to also indicate is that there's no removal of vegetation that's needed for this. So they did provide you with the aerial views of the house, and so there's no trees and so forth that need to be removed.
No.
Also to achieve this.
In fact, we're creating some planting beds here and here. This is a door, we're leaving that. So we're trying to maintain the best parts of the existing main house, and fixing any damage that's happened over the years, and making it prettier, and hopefully an asset at the top of that road. An asset. Okay, that's it. Jim?
So I think what's going on on this property again is mostly a discussion of the historic nature of the structure, the proposed changes, how they fit into, you know, the hamlet, as we discussed in the earlier one. Definitely be looking for input from Hay Pack. I think you discussed, I was just curious about the material, it's going to be demolished and reused, anything proposed to be reused at the use? I think you said you're icky for pillars.
Supposed, yeah. The railing is in tough shape, but we're not intending to do anything crazy like cable rail, we're going to probably replace exactly what's there. We're trying to keep the, kind of respect the historic value of what's there as much as possible. As we move along with the application, we'll want you to be specific as to what elements you will be retaining exactly as they are, and which other ones you'll be replacing with something else. I will say that the new doors we're putting in are going to have munchen bars, and it's a three-quarter door, so it has a bottom panel to it. It's not a patio door in the front, or in the back, actually. Do we have the windows, do we have a window and a door schedule page? I think that's in here. Here we go. I don't know if you can see it. There you go. Okay. Zoom, just go down. Yeah, this is, here we go. So these are the, these are the exterior doors, three-quarter panel light doors. I was at the Sissing House in High Plains, is it called the Sissing House? And their door, the original door, looks just like that, actually. Which is, it's a little earlier than the, than the, this era, but it wasn't uncommon to see this type of door as a front door, as an entry door, I should say. And so we're being very uniform throughout. And we can look at the windows, right now there are no munchen bars in the windows, so I think we're just replacing exactly what's there. Other than maybe in the attic, I think we're putting casements in there, which are in there now, I believe.
As far as the Georgia, what's going to happen with the chimney? I think that's something the planning board and Hay Pack are going to want to know about for, you know, before it's part of the process, just understanding if they are not, if it is even, seeing what is going to happen with that, if it's going to be removed or if it's replaced with something with that material, it would be, given the historic nature of the property. Something that was more than we know it's on the plan. I had a question about the terrace, it looked to me like that was new.
In the back?
All this terrace area here?
Well, that's a walkway, actually, on the side, and there is a terrace at the bottom of the stairs.
This, is this today?
No, it doesn't, it's just a backyard.
That's the flagstone she was talking about, that's found outside.
Right, so there is, so there is disturbance on outside the building, it's not just the building itself, or any changes to it, you're proposing with material down.
Correct.
We're trying to enhance and improve the property.
Just want to make sure.
And that may be something that Hay Pack will want to talk to you about.
Okay.
Any ground disturbance around the builder's trench might require a phase 1 of the archeology?
And then my other comment.
The deck would be impervious, by the way, so there wouldn't be any, I believe, less runoff, I mean more runoff. It's still, the water can still percolate into the ground in the back there. Would you say it was pervious or impervious? It's pervious, it will be percolating into the landscape, so we're not, we're not creating any more runoff than that's already there.
My other comment is, I think the site plan is nice to show us what's going on, but when I first looked at it, I thought you were also doing a subdivision with this, so I think we need some kind of clarification and note or something on this plan that states that this is just for reference only. I don't want there to be confusion by anyone now or in the future that there was a subdivision proposed as part of this, or, you know, creation of lots, or anything related to lots, too, I guess, because we are showing both lots here, it does say proposed house location.
Understood.
And we're talking about this one, right?
Yes, correct.
So some kind of clarification, write off something, just to make it clear, what we're looking at would be good, just to begin.
You do utilize that just simply for the topography, so you have the check on.
Right, no, I appreciate that, I just want to make sure we clarify that that's not, this is not part of the submission, which is so.
So are you saying that we just cut this off completely and just, or no? Cut it over, no, no, just that?
Just to know, you can put some gray hatch over something that just designates that this is not a proposed, right? This is just for reference only, something that affects.
Is there a relationship between the two houses? Because the walkway seems to connect.
They're both owned by a common owner.
And I worked on the design of that as well. We are using a few of the elements in the main house, we're using the GAF Sienna Dragon's Tooth Asphalt Tile, which again is a, has a historic reference to many, many, many buildings in the Hudson Valley. Sometimes it was metal, sometimes it was slate. And we have a photograph of the installation in the main house, if you'd like to see how that looks. We're also going to be using, on top of that, on the hips, on the hips and valleys, metal flashing, which was also oftentimes the way that, that was employed when it was slate and metal. So, Jim?
I guess, you have a comment, you know, the owner owns both houses, just wanted to state for the record that the town does not permit certain materials currently, just want to make sure you're aware of that, but there are discussions that have been for a while in the way, about how the town is going to manage.
And to planning board members?
I just was curious why we desire to use casement windows, to the extent that we use those, instead of trying to be reference to the existing windows, the existing structure.
Well, in the kitchen, it's a lot on the main house, it's a lot, it's almost impossible to open a double hung window over a counter, so that's why we're using a casement there, and that's the only place we're using it on the main house. And as far as the former addition, we're only using the casements on the side that only one property owner can see, and on the back where only Darren and Dana can see. And also, they're just, they're more energy efficient, easier to operate, and...
And I think as far as the design, they have, you can match them to some historical context, correct, on the selection that you chose?
Well, yeah, it's also the architectural series Anderson, it's the same line, it had the same sash profile as the double hungs, so it does relate somewhat as well. And then the only, the only other, you can see from the front, you don't see any casements, it's just the doors going to the primary bedroom with the balcony net in front of it. And we are making reference to some, we're using some historic profile brackets in certain places, under the window boxes and under the balcony net, which again, you can see throughout the Village of Ryback.
They're very fond of their balcony nets in Ryback, why I learned.
Yeah. I guess others have any comments before I make a couple?
I have one question, in this lower left-hand corner image, are we looking on the porch, right? And does then the roof line transitions toward the addition, is something that the siding has also transitioned under the porch?
Well, this is the end, you put, there's a door here going into the mudroom here, so this is the end of the former addition, you could say, and then this is the porch that has open rafters, pergola. But we are following the same slope of that roof, and that just continues seamlessly. And then this is a beam, the freeze board continues and is the, the side of the beam with a more historical rafter tail on it.
Are you talking about the board and baton?
Yeah, well, the whole transition, I'm just trying to understand how this transition goes. And that will be board and baton, and then the other material is?
Is existing brick.
Existing brick, so it'll go from brick to board and baton, all under the porch.
Correct.
And we are using, again, some brackets, which are common throughout the village, for some stability on that, on that beam, holding up the pergola. Did I understand correctly that it's your intention to paint the brick?
Yes.
You know, I, I, there are some things about it that I find, in my opinion, straying a little bit from what I would consider to be character defining features of this building, one of them would be to be painting the brick, when it was historically unpainted. You also made reference in a couple places with balconets and other things, that it sounded like you were finding examples of them in the hamlet and incorporating them under this building. That isn't necessarily the best thing to do, if you can't really tie them to this particular building or that particular style. So I'm not, I'm not in love with that idea, that just because there's balconets in Ryback, there should be balconets here. I think the further you stray from what the original bones, if you will, of this structure, the further you go, the more you diminish its historical significance. So I would just, I'm going to be looking at that carefully, just with just some caution. I'm trying to understand as to least that transition from the brick to the board and baton, I'm not sure how it's going to be, I'm not sure how prominent it's going to be. Those are some of the things I would expect Hay Pack to be looking at in the field, and I just wanted to bring those to your attention.
Okay, we can look at that, thank you.
And if I may, part of the mission, in addition to making a better floor plan and a more attractive main house, was to clean up a pretty icky, unfortunate addition. And so that was, we were kind of looking for references throughout Ryback and Ryback, and that was one of the things that kept appearing as something that kind of, in many instances, had the building reach out to the street or the property, and it seemed very engaging. Besides being nice from the inside to open your doors and your bedrooms, see what the weather's like in the morning, it also, the examples we kept coming up against seemed very, something that really engaged the building with the surrounding property. So that was the intention. I understand, but you know, by the time you paint it and remove the shutters, that I think are also character defining features, each one of those removals is moving it further and further away from its historic authenticity. So I'm just raising that as something that might be discussed. Anyone else?
Do we have lighting details, some lights on the plans? Do you have the kind of custom light lights you're getting, is there some?
We have the specifications for the lights, but not sure for metrics, we can add that to the plan.
And of course, any landscaping?
Are any landscaping beds shown?
Yeah. Fairly deep. We'll show it to the lights if we can, and we'll do the form metric for the light.
And then also, planning board?
What are the proposed colors of the exterior?
We're keeping a fairly neutral palette of a sort of a soft white painted brick. You can see there's some damage on the brick that when you re-point the brick and the mortar and re-parch in some places, there's also a big exterior vine that's done some damage on the celeration in particular, that we thought that it would hide a multiple of sins and also kind of freshen it up a bit as well. So the main body of the brick is going to be an off-white. The windows' color is a sort of a bronzy gray, and we were considering also having then on the trim a darker color, which was a very Victorian thing to do. They were really in love with darker trim. Well, want to see your color choices?
Understood, yeah, thank you.
For the waterfall of the addition. That would match the house, because we thought that if we painted all the same color, we would marry the two together as much as possible there. That was, that was our intention. Anyone else?
You just said that we're supposed to repent our sins, cover them up.
Oh, really?
So for the course consideration tonight, a draft procedural resolution, the application by Darren and Dana Page for site plan and special use permit on town code chapter 125, undertake exterior interior changes to the home on 22 Hudson Street, accepting the application supporting documents as I go for the review, classifying actions type 2 under secret. It's going to be public hearing for June 20th at 6:15. So we'll send this to the CAB, we'll send it to the WAC, we'll send it to Hay Pack and Dutchess County for review. May I be delegated to planning board members to, excuse me, to my site.
I'll go. I'll go with Louie's. I'll go with Louise. Thank you. And I'll call your, I will let you know where in Reinbeck and you can do this.
That's it?
I said, we'll let you know where in Reinbeck and get them all together.
Right.
Is the motion for a resolution? I'm just about to ask. Sorry, sorry. You just went, sorry, do a resolution, now I'll ask for a resolution. Thank you, Michael. Second please, all those in favor?
Hi.
How does extend the motion carry? Thank you, project review schedule cycle. Thank you, have a good evening. You too. All right, that includes the new applications for this evening. And the first public hearing this evening is for Honeybee Child Care, 21 Reinbeck Drive Site Plan and Site Design Department, daycare in Reinbeck. Good evening.
Hey, good, hello everyone, my name is Kathy Evans. We are representing Honeybee Child Care, we're looking for a special use permit for a childcare center, I think for a nursing home. That's where we serve some children from ages two months to five years old. We submitted a site plan previously, there were some suggestions made, and we were able to do that. So, this is Craig, who is from G P I, he's the one who created the plan.
Can you, we're starting from the G P I, I'm a senior on state architect, working the site tonight for a project, we're the site's civil engineer as well as the M E engine for the building work. Here tonight to help answer questions, go through some of the ones that have already come up, as well as if there's any additional ones from the board and the public tonight. Unless you guys have a way that you would like me to go through this, I figured I'll just kind of walk through the comments we received so far and kind of walk you through the line of plans and help you.
Well, the public's here, so you let women just give an overview of the project in general, and then you can go over the questions that were asked in the field, and then we'll take your advice.
We brought the, we set back a couple of points there. Let me try a point and say you guys in mind. So, the existing building outline was roughly, yeah, this is, I've had this at my house after meetings, and I can light up a farm side all around a thousand feet from my house, but this thing is crazy. So, anyway, the existing building outline is roughly right here, and what we're doing with the project is simply putting in two spaces for outdoor play areas. This one right here that I'm pointing at, that will be the top lot, and that would be for, basically, everything above the, right, like one area. And then, this other area right out here is where this will be for the indoor area. Just to keep safe separations, you don't have the, you know, when it comes just out there, blowing over the pits that are up there. And aside from that, the other improvements that we're looking at are just some very simple parking striping and a little bit of new asphalt here to get some ADA compliant slopes in the existing parking lot that's out there. New walkway coming up through to the new entrance, and then where that will split off to go to the two different play areas. In between the parking area and the play, both play areas, we, in the previous submission, we had shown a string of bollards along here, just to give some, reacting to one of the previous rounds of comments, to give some safety separation from vehicles, to give that person that confusion, the person with the gas pedal and goes forward instead of backwards or whatever, they won't have the ability at all to give, you know, accidentally up and through here. There is intervening terrain, topography wise, this elevation up here is probably sitting above or by higher than the parking lot anyway, but just to give that extra level of safety and precaution, that's what that was about. And what you're seeing on this set of plans right here is one of the last rounds of comments mentioned, in fact, that bollards aren't exactly the most attractive thing in the universe, and what can we do to soften that up? So, I believe the comment was, can we kind of put some plantings in around the bollards to, you know, dress it up a little bit? And what we ended up doing is, with the exception of a couple locations in here where we have new signs for the handicapped spaces that are already there, but we're putting them in bollards, we've actually removed the rest of the bollards, and we instead are putting in like large landscape boulders in there, because honestly aesthetically, that's going to blend better with landscaping. With landscaping around bollards, it's going to look like you're landscaping around bollards, it's going to exactly blend. And then, we've got notation, I'm not sure if all of you've had a chance to really kind of chew through the plans, but we've got notation up here that references you over to a set of notes in this area. And it's basically just programmatic, prescriptive notation that talked about the fact that, you know, we're not no more than six foot spit clear space in between bollards. And what's going to happen is during construction, you know, I can't predict right now that they're all going to be exactly this big, so you'd have some field direction happening. So, place these things and then intermix the plantings, you know, once once the boulders are placed. So, in a similar fashion, what you're seeing is the crosshatched areas in here are just representative of where we place landscaping, and then down here, I think it's a part of the year, but that's where we've got kind of the programmatic outline of some possible plant choices for what we would use to sprinkle in there. Another comment that we received was just kind of questions about power, we providing ADA compliant access from parking lot up into playground areas and what we're doing. So, and the answer to that is that, so everywhere, I'm going to be preaching the choir a little bit, but everywhere where you're up to 5%, it's just a regular walkway, since you've reached 5, and you're up to 1 in 12 slope, you're a ramp, you gotta hand rails. So, that's what you're seeing in this first stretch right here, where it would be a 1 in 12 ramp, where those are both sides, and the transition to everything up to that is as 5% are less, and once you get close to the building entry, it drops down to about 2. So, you're going up to the, each of the playground areas.
So, that's concrete?
I'm sorry.
Where's the ramp made on?
Yeah, all the, all the walkways will be concrete, yeah. It's honestly, it's your, it's your best material from longevity, from predictability of surface and irregularities. Asphalt's fine, but it's not going to last as long. Concrete, you got a lot better tolerances on installation as well. So, the top lots, surface and drainage, were a couple other questions that came up. I brought a sample, you guys can pass this around. Isn't necessarily the exact manufacturer, because there's a bunch of them, you can actually get this stuff at Home Depot, but we're looking at using the loose fill rubber mulch that lasts way longer, that retains its soft, you know, impact attenuation factor. You know, wood mulch, which is very commonly used, requires a lot more upkeep, maintenance, constant replenishment, it compacts, it becomes soil. Not that it's a bad thing, but it's just, this stuff is a better long-term solution. Color is kind of to be determined, but that's just gives you an idea of some of the products that are out there.
You mean loose, or going as like a mat?
No, we're not going to pour it in place, we're going to leave it loose like that, you know. It's easier to supplement it that way, because what happens too, we don't have any swings or anything like big wear, you know, elements here, but as an example, anyway, if you guys have been to any playgrounds where there's swings, in a important place, that's the area that is going to just dug out over time, and the only way you fix that is to have people that do it come back and tell you how it's this way, it's more owner, you know, maintenance friendly, and you can supplement yourself as it has to be. The drainage questions, you can go to the grading plan? I'll give you the next sheet, one after. There you go. It's going to be, hard to read, but one of the things that we did from the last two rounds of comments actually, is there was a question originally about the heights of the walls. So, what we, what we did is we added information in the spot grid relative to the walls, that this helps you see quickly and easily what the maximum reveal would be on that kind of two locations for the walls. And then, we've also added floor air with slopes, you can see where the water going and that what, you know, is a key to the flat, looks like. We've got fences around, you know, both sets of playgrounds, and the detailing later on influence that gets into the walls themselves. The surface drainage of the playground itself, as you can see looking at the material, it's loose, it's open, water, when it hits it, it's going to go right through it. When we get from site plan approval drawings to transitioning to construction level drawings, that's where we're going to do some perks, out in, out in locations where the playgrounds are going to go, see what our, see what that perk is like. If it perks well, you install it, you put your fabric down, you put the mulch down if you're done. If we don't get good perks, then what we'll do, we'll just shape that subgrade, we'll put a perk grade at quite available point, and we'll fade away that, so that everything that goes down through that, we have a path out of there, not get trapped, so the mulch needs to sit there. That is the bulk of the original comments we did just receive? Yes, so, if you, well, you can't see it here, but if you can see, once I move this beacon out of the way, there's a contour line right here. I'll move it, see, I'm going for a second, but where that contour is, is where there's another existing tree that we're showing to be removed for obvious reasons, it's in the middle of the, of the play area that we're going to create. We did receive additional comments just today. We scrambled to react to those quickly, I thought I didn't have time to actually send these to you today, but I did bring 11 by 17s that I can pass around so you guys can see what we're doing to react to the latest set of comments. It's not a significant change over what you're seeing. The thing we really did is just change the shape of this, of this particular playground area. We elongated it a little bit so that we can pull this edge further away, and we're, we're going to change, we still need the detailing that's in the plans for the concrete wall just because of this playground, and then it's elevated up above the parking lot. Over here, we're going to change this, this, we need it all to be a segment of block, we don't have to go as deep with it, we don't have to get into that root zone of trees. And by doing a combination of those two things and pulling this back, this edge right here essentially where it is, we're able to get back about right here. And with, with doing that and extending the ramp portion of the sidewalk a little bit more, putting another small stretch here and here, and you see down here, that's going to let us bring the elevation up so that we're a little bit more in fill situation, a little bit less of a cut. Can't be perfect, because there's still a lot of mercy of the grades that are out there, but we'll probably take that 18 inches and knock it down to just a few, where we might have to cut a little bit. But doing both of those things is going to give us the ability to work around that other tree that we're going to show you. Well, pass these, please, you're, you're saying those are, that's really the thing that's different, and having just gotten those today, I wasn't able to get those over to you to have them up here, to show you what we're looking at.
Okay.
So, with that, if there are any questions you have, or if there's anything else?
Start with the planning board. I think I made the site visit, would you like to start off, and then I'll ask Ruben to comment in the C A B?
Yeah, Melanie and I went and visited the site, and there is, as you mentioned, a very dramatic change in elevation between where that upper playground is and the parking lot. I believe there's a sidewalk now where you show the landscaping.
What, in here?
Yes.
Yeah. Reconciling that stuff.
Right, so, and the sidewalk is going to be replaced by the boulders, and it had been planned at that time as bollards on that side. So, that's, that's a variation from what we looked at and agreed reviewed. It's, it is tucked in the back, it's behind the tower where most of the activity is going to take place. And it's a pretty significant change as far as the tree, not, I mean, there, but it's conveniently located to the part of the existing building that's going to be used as the daycare center. And also, we were told that the daycare center is largely going to be populated by people who work at Fern Cliff, they're going to take the greatest advantage of that. And it's also an incentive for people to continue working there or to come to Fern Cliff to work. And I, I think Fern Cliff is a big employer in the town of Reinbeck, and it's kind of a cottage industry as far as, you know, the way that business happens in this town is very, it's very important, and it's encouraging to see that you're doing something that's going to contribute to people continuing to work and live happily in Reinbeck and not just Hudson Valley. But it looks like it's a very sensitive installation, a lot of thought went into it, and I, I liked what I saw, so.
Just a couple additional comments, maybe on here, but I was wondering about, so let's talk about traffic. One of the things we were told when we were there is that this lot is essentially not used by visitors or employees of the facility. Is that's correct, right?
That's correct.
And I think you said you've never seen anybody parking there, or pretty much never anybody, so. But you did indicate that this is the main route for any, any deliveries that are coming to the facility. So, commercial trucks, other vehicles are coming in here, although we were told that it's pretty predictable, we did, we were concerned because they have to go all the way around, and the loading dock is in the back, and the only way deliveries can get to the building is through this lot, that is now going to be primarily the drop off for young children. So, we had, we raised concerns when we were there about how we can ensure that this, the highest level of safety is managed here. Some of it is directional, when we went for the site visit, I didn't know where to go. So, you get in the campus, and I think signage has to be addressed, I mean, parents will obviously get used to it, but it wouldn't prevent other people from wandering and was maybe here if they didn't know where they were going. So, I think that's important. Also, even throughout the concept of, did you need that many parking spaces, and was it possible to actually pull up and allow children to get out of vehicle without going into the parking lot itself? Could you parallel park, which would reduce the number of slips there, but would allow children to get out on the grass side and never have to be? And I, I'm hoping we can manage it, I'm sure you can, but we, we have to raise that as something that I think is, is worth talking about. You certainly can.
Thank you. So, one of the things, which is very important, because where I, we work in the child care, you know, business, safety is our primary concern. So, definitely the truck, there's one delivery a week, and we work it out with the nursing home as far as the delivery's schedule, that our parent drop off and pickup, so the drop off time is between 7:00 and 9:00, and the pickup time is between 4:00 and 6:00. So, their delivery, which is once a week, happen between 10:00 and 3:00. So, there wouldn't be the one truck that's traveling around to drop off supplies.
There's only one?
There's only, from my understanding, there's one delivery a week that they get.
That's two product, that's?
Everything that's on there is, is what I was told by the gentleman in the building, you know, he doesn't need this.
So, the facility calls everything, one vehicle?
Yeah, he said that there's one tractor trailer that kind of comes in, and it was, we can just coordinate the schedule so it'd be between 10:00 and 3:00, which would not interfere with the childcare drop off and pickup. As far as the parallel parking, that's definitely something that we had talked about as well, and we would have to put in place a drop off and pickup. When you have parents parallel parking, first thing we worry about, even at our other sites, is the keys, the car running, right? So that, you know, even though you say okay, parallel park, most parents are running, the car's going to be running, so that's how we always want them to park the car, take the child out of the car so that there's no rolling of a car, plus, you know, there's admissions and smog and things like that. So, we, that was something that we did consider as well.
And we also, we ourselves realized that, you know, that was problematic to some extent, and that they still have to turn around and get back out.
Right, and there's no turnaround there.
There's no turnaround, there's no turnaround. And you are pretty com, so will, will your employees, because your employees will be your employees, not Fern Cliff's employees?
That is correct.
So, will baby parking in this lot?
From what, just talking with the administrators there, they're going to have assigned parking because we're going to leave those spaces open for parents. We need to have that so they can pull right up to the center, and they don't have to walk any distance from the parking spaces that are further away.
Okay. Any other, I'm going to ask Jim for his comments, anybody else from the planning board, though, and then I'm going to ask Ruben.
Yes, I would say, I think it's a good addition, I like the fact that your other facility would create it with serious things and these things, I got programs, I think that's tremendously helpful in a center such as this. We could really talk this through, and I should be very glad that you should help me.
Ruben? Ruben, if you want to, sit, please.
Hi, Ruben, Republic of California Division of Defense Report. Thank you for your quick responses, much appreciated. I think the changing of the configuration of the larger play areas would be helpful. You said, couldn't read the top of curve and the bottom of curve in this area? You said that you had, you had that?
Yeah, if you are able to go back to the grading and zoom in there a little bit. So, on this plan, so as an example, right in this location right here, the abbreviation there that we added, 18.6 inches is the delta between the top of that wall and the lowest exposed portion.
Okay, so, on the outside of the wall, you're keeping this debris, and then you're just using the wall to, as a retaining wall if you will?
Right, exactly. Yeah, but as I mentioned- Yeah. But as I mentioned too, just to keep in mind, we, with what we, and the point of it is that we're currently right now, we're pulling this a little bit further away from the tree. And then we're going to switch it up in this location, we're going to switch it to a segmental block so that we don't have to down this part of the construction.
Yes, that will be helpful. Thank you. And, um, in terms of protection of the existing trees, I see we have a ring around them. It might be good to also to have a, a snow fence. Actually, just, you know, coordinating off this, this whole area so that if it's moving, the person doesn't run over all of the, the roots of the trees, uh, using building the destruction, that would be?
Yeah, we could change this to just be, you know, encompassing one, one fence kind of thing.
And final comment is the one tree that you're, you're taking out, it's understood the rationale for doing that. Uh, we would just ask that you replace it somewhere else, not too far away with a, with a mature specimen. Does that make sense?
I'm completely understood on that one. Again, back to the reconfiguration of this a little bit. My, I've been able to pull this edge, this wall inboard towards, towards the existing building more. So it's a more of a, about in here. So, um, I gotta finish up, but we'll look at that spot, but I believe we can be able to get, I'm going to keep that tree instead of. That's, that's what, that's my hope. So with what I was saying before was we're, we're extending the handicap ramp portion a little bit so that we can get our elevation up a little bit higher and, and balance out. Like I was saying, it, it's, it's not perfect because this is a knob, it's higher than that thing down here, but it'll help us to put in that a little bit more and it does, I feel, it'll be more filled and cut.
All right. Thank you.
Absolutely.
Thank you. Ruben, much, Martin, come on in.
I just had two. One was kind of the existing, regarding the, the height of the fence. I'm trying to figure this out. You have the fence on top of the retaining wall. So collectively, that whole thing counts as the height of the fence. Does any of that go over six feet?
No, nothing will be over six feet. And also part of what I was just mentioning with the switching in this location to a segmental block, we'll pull the fence inboard to the playground side of that fence in just two times or two for the post, which will also further help us minimize the invasive risk.
There were two comments from HAPAC, um, that I wanted to know. First ones for the, you know, the planning board's consideration. They were talking about whether or not visual acoustical screening of the outdoor play area from neighboring property would be appropriate. Um, I said the planning board should discuss that and see if you think that's necessary. I did drive down through there today. It is pretty well, I mean, there's a lot of vegetation across the parking lot and the bugs that are living on the other side. The other comment that they, they brought up was actually not necessarily related to, um, historic conservation all, but it was more related to the use itself. They were talking about the fact that this isn't existing non-conforming commercial use and that the use going in is going into a non-conforming building, um, which it is. However, this is a permitted use, it's a special use permit in the HP 20. I, I gave you a bunch of notes. I'm not going to read them all today. You'll get a copy of them. I gave you a bunch of notes about my thoughts on this, but I cannot interpret the law. So because this was brought up, um, from HAPAC, this question is about whether or not, um, the use is permitted in the non-conforming building. I believe that by putting a permitted use in a non-conforming structure, you're actually making it less non-conforming, which is kind of where we want to see things generally go, um, in planning. But, um, I did talk to John Lyons about this and I think we just need to get his okay on this before we look forward. And Mike and Brian, you know, talking about the zoning administrator as well. I can't, like you said, I can't interpret the law, but I, I don't believe there's an issue. But unfortunately, I can't make that call myself. So that's generally kind of where my notes stand. We, we have a legal question we have to get resolved, I guess, at some point in time.
Let me ask if there's anyone here in the public that wishes to comment on this application. All right. So, um, based on what Jim has just said, it would seem as if we need to continue the public hearing until we hear back on that legal question that's been raised. You, you, what is your feeling on that?
I, I wasn't really able to follow the contortions of logic that take it to the point where this would not be a permitted use. I think it's within the spirit of, uh, the zoning regulation since it is considered to be an acceptable new use. I think it would follow that it would be a legitimate auxiliary use, secondary use. Um, it's also, um, it's consistent with the LWRP and, um, I, that's my feeling. I, I think it's, it should be fine, but, uh, as Jim pointed out, I am not a lawyer. I can't interpret the law.
I guess I would say that, uh, the non-conforming use, existing non-conforming use can be expanded up to 50% under certain circumstances, but we're not talking about expanding non-conforming use. We're talking about conforming use. We've already established reaction by this, uh, planning board and early determination that this could be considered an accessory use in, uh, facilities such as Fern Cliff and of course, Greenfield and Brookly. So we've already established that basis. So I don't quite see why the permission to put in a conforming use, a permitted use should be hold up to building that's only injured itself. But I guess the building may well be conforming, it could be a building similar to that, but the use itself. Apparently, Fern Cliff has been there for quite some time. My past reports was the original Fern Cliff nursing home up there until they built the nursing home and built the town. So I, I agree with Craig. I don't quite see, it seems to be like trying to find a problem and I don't think we're going to be able to do that.
But it's, I understand that one of the issues was it's a really a permitted use, but not a permitted accessory use. And there was some discussion about the previous, um, zoning administrator view on another similar use. But it seemed to me that that was in a different district and a somewhat different situation. So my conclusion was the zoning administrator should go time on this, just as occurred, um, in the first instance.
That could be, again, I didn't think it was an issue originally when I got the letter. I obviously wanted to make some comments to it. I don't believe it's an issue, but I can't. I can't make that determination as a planning consultant. I mean, you can decide what you want to do, but you're right. The accessory use is, is, um, was one of the comments that was made. I, I believe the previous finding kind of creates that situation that says that that is acceptable and it's in a different zoning district. It's still a permitted use in zoning district in the town. But these are the conversations that kind of came up last, uh, Friday. And I, you got a map permission here and you'll answer it.
I think it's unfortunate that there's no one to represent the other side at this public hearing. And if there's some sort of an issue, um, with the zoning, I, I, nobody's really advocating for that.
I guess if I may, I just thought one question that we have is if we're, if we're looking at this meeting to go a little bit longer to give a little bit of time for that determination to be made. And obviously I'm the same wavelength with you, but can we just conditionally approve this with the, the understanding that that is the condition that you guys have? Because I mean, I think we're talking about the town's determining zoning personnel and I'm thinking in the conversation.
Planning board determining in this case, but you?
Right. That way we're not pushing the project for another month because we're, we're on a clock with, uh, with people, the application for the daycare.
If it's what it's called.
The suggestion would be public hearing, do it two weeks instead of?
Another month. Is this the only issue that seems to be bringing this up? This one is a potential real issue? And we have no public comment. We have no other concerns expressed. We have simply, this is the only potential. And, uh, when do you expect the different?
Well, I just talked to him on Friday, so, you know, we need a little time looking into it, obviously, Monday. I, I don't know what the turnaround would be. If, if the planning board would consider a conditional approval, you just have to understand if something changes and you get an approval, then it doesn't go forward the way that that conditional approval happened. You're at risk of then possibly having to come back and start over again. Get back on the agenda and everything because it wouldn't be singling in the public hearing. So there's that. That, that's the downside of doing a conditional.
I mean, is the only alternative to wait another month? So I'm not?
No, I bet you just offer you an alternative to reschedule you for two weeks.
If we did a conditional approval, if there was an issue, it wouldn't be with what's been presented. In other words, it wouldn't be with the site plan, et cetera. It would be with this issue of it being an accessory use, right?
So they really have to start over with all the site plan? Everything else was acceptable to us? Or if the use isn't allowed, right?
Right. If the use isn't allowed, then we have a bigger issue.
They have to do something different. You don't have to do it.
I, I don't personally, but again, I can't, I don't know. So it's really, I, it's up to the board and applicant, which you, I don't know how you want to proceed. I, I do think we need to have John, just, and possibly Brian, you know, just give us guidance on that one or another because of that being brought up. I don't want to leave it out there, but that's just my opinion.
Well, mine would be given two weeks.
I, I'm inclined to ask to continue it for two weeks and to ask for opinions. We should be in touch with John Lyons to say we need this, we need this resolved, um, prior to, I guess have it resolved as soon as possible. I, I, we don't like to hold anybody up. And we'll also refer to the zoning administrator, just make sure that we're not missing any issues there. So we appreciate your patience and your tolerance for this, but, you know, we are a little cautious when, when our planning board attorney raises an issue for a variety of reasons, for our own protection and also for yours. We don't want you to go through all this and then have a situation that you didn't anticipate. So I, I think that, that motion, I would gratefully accept it.
I would gratefully get your motion.
So I have a motion to continue the public hearing.
Second?
All those are good, right?
Aye.
All those are centered. Thank you very much. And I, I really want to say I appreciate.
Well, that'd be the 29th?
It would be June 5th.
June, June 5th.
I have a vote, right? I have a vote and I have all those in favor.
Yeah.
But I just wanted to, uh, I wanted to extend my appreciation for the fact that the comments that were made in the field, you took seriously, you addressed them, came back with good answers. So, um, that's, that's really important, both for this lady, I'm sure Ruben's acting, and we are too. You know, we, we do believe it's, it's a good use. I will say myself, having been in the field, I didn't, the other issue that was raised about noise, traveling to adjacent property owners, very familiar with the adjacent property. I, I think it would be, uh, almost impossible for anybody to be disturbed by the noise. The building itself is a big solid building that is going to create a sound barrier to anything traveling because the building, the adjacent property owners are to the west. So I, I don't see that as an issue. I assume most of you have been on the property and would agree that, um, I don't think there's additional threat to anything. So I just wanted to get that in record since it was raised. If anyone doesn't agree, I think we'll just move on. Thank you, everybody. The, um, second and last public hearing for this evening, because I would jump ahead. The third one scheduled was the Ryan Cliff Hotel Corky for Brunel's free and we received a request from the applicant to continue that to the July 17th meeting. So if anybody that's here, in particular in Ryan Cliff Hotel, you guys are helping out early. And that will then circle us back to the, uh, 108 South 3, turnpike, site plan and wetlands permit, parking plans. Who are you, Rachel?
Hey.
How are you?
I'm good, hi, good friend.
Good, thanks.
So I'm here to follow up on our, um, request for a site plan approval and, uh, wetlands permit approval for our small pharmacy at Wildsbury. For anyone here who maybe isn't familiar with the project, I make black currant the core that we started making in town with Catskill and we're located to a barn in Reinbeck where we make like a vermouthy, all natural approach to black currant fur that's made from black currants all grown in the Hudson Valley, local honey, um, and wild botanicals. And we are manufacturing primarily in that space, but looking to open the opportunity for people to visit with us on Saturdays so that they can learn more about black currants, which are kind of a unique agricultural resource in the U.S. They were illegal to grow from the 20th century and so education is a huge part of our business model, helping people understand and connect with that sort of largely unknown fruit.
So we, we've discussed the number of items. I think there are really just three remaining, um, on my list. One is, um, did you reach out to County Highway? Appreciate that. Sorry, I was taking DFTs against Albers State Road for some reason. Um, I did, I did see the email that County Highway said they're okay with everything as long as you make some changes, I guess, to the entry entrance of the driveway at Salsbury, something in that effect.
Yeah.
Okay. So that's County Highway. The other?
Do you need to see those changes in the plan?
Because they're County Highway and they're kind of in the right way, I think it could probably be something that can be a little later, but I'd leave that to, it's kind of like one of those things where we do development. Sometimes the final permits with DOT and things can kind of run after this review if we don't County Highway's agreeing it.
We know it's coming in fast.
I'd leave that to the board. Uh, the other one, just a question where we stay on with County Health. Let's see, Dave Pearson.
We did not, we should follow up from Dave Pearson. We, uh, reached out to him a number of times. I think he's still sitting with the plans and we hoped that he would get back with us, but unfortunately not. It seems like the existing septic will be sufficient to address the proposed use for the site. We're just waiting for him to confirm that.
And then the only other comment I have related to the sign, um, and I think I did bring this up before. So the county said the location of this, the sign here is fine. They don't have any issues with it. The only concern I have is that the proposals for the signs, uh, between this sign here and the proposal to put a 60-inch essential logo on the side of the building, which I believe will be a sign, puts us over the maximum allowed area for signs for this use. We know the town code has been really strict when it comes to sign sizes. But I do feel that it's, it's over, which requires variance. I guess that can be up for discussion, but that's the only remaining issue that I see outside of County. So I don't know if you thought about the signage and any thoughts on, like, changes or anything like that or not.
Um, do you have specific guidance on what the maximum allowable square footage would be?
There are black currants. Let me see if I can read through my notes. It looks like the wall sign proposing is about 60 by 60, which we're told 25 square feet sign area. The freestanding sign is 36 inch wide including the posts. If you take that freestanding sign and assume it's about 36 by 36, um.
So just a note that we, um, have updated the idea for the painting to be more like three and a half by three and a half. So that'll diminish the square footage.
So anyway, we've got it. Section 12537 does regulate signs and it states how much signage you can have in terms of the area. And I know it is, is pretty strict. But it does seem like the, um, the total we're proposing for was about 32 square feet of sign area which we see the majority of what's allowed. So you'd have to take a look at the code to see what is permitted.
So now there's the agricultural allowable sign within 16 square feet possible that doesn't require, it's going to be exempt. Sign options. I think that, that's, yeah, okay.
Yeah, because they can have that one with exemption and so I told them that they only need to apply for the one permit.
Okay. That's, okay?
Good. Question?
Absolutely.
Could you point to what would be on the side of the barn? Yeah, it's just this bubbly seat. I consider that a, like, an art object. You can paint something on your barn, right?
What is the logo?
It's, it's a logo.
It doesn't look like a logo.
It's the logo.
Thank you.
That's the logo that you are testing. Bottom and everybody sees it. They know exactly what it is.
It is a logo and that's why we, we did discuss this, this being, like, depending on the size of the barn, but it is the logo of the business and that's why I brought up the issue. But Brian, if you come to a determination that one is permitted under Ag and the other necessary, some of them?
Yeah, and it's under the minimum size.
And that addresses that.
And that seems smaller than what they have, the reason we were saying about, uh, five by three. It has like three and a half by three and a half, so.
Well, yeah, that's your determination and that addresses that issue. That is really just down to the county feedbacks.
I think Ruben, you have a report?
Jim, bring the site plan, please. Okay, so I, can folks hear me without the mic? Is that okay?
I have a laser pointer. Come on, Ruben.
Oh, okay.
Office right there. Second one, don't move up. A little red slash there. There we go.
So as is, as is under other plans, this is the hundred-foot buffer to the, uh, hundred-foot button. And here's the, the existing gravel driveway which goes through. Here are the parking spaces, we're in here. Twenty of the, is it 25? Twenty, 26 spaces. And the gravel driveway are in the 100-foot buffer, which requires a special permit if you're going to do disturbances within that buffer. Sorry. So the parking spaces are delineated of an appropriate size to nine by 19 or nine by 19. But the space behind them is the existing driveway which averages between 10 and 12 feet wide. You cannot back a car out, a 20-foot, either pickup truck, SUV, or other car out into a 12-foot wide driveway. So that's, that's an issue. In many of the spots along here, it is constrained so the driveway could not be, you have the chupons and there's slopes on either side. So the existing driveway could not really be altered to let in substantial disturbance to the, to the area. Furthermore, the width of the driveway is such that cars could not pass each other. So if you have cars in this area and in this area, it just would be an untenable situation for people coming and going. And so what the permits to the environmental aspect of this is, this driveway of necessity needs to be widened so people could go back and forth. Otherwise you have people going this way and people wanting to go out and they can't get by each other. There is not a, in most areas, there's not enough room on the shoulder to be able to pass. So those are the, those are the issues that we're finding.
Thank you.
Am I able to respond to this? Which one is the red one?
Oh, yeah.
Oh, no, it's the red one.
Just a couple of quick notes, just that there are little areas like here and here. Besides the turnout, that's not being shown on this that we put into the site plan to allow for people to turn around. There's also distinct visibility for the entire version of the driveway. I regularly park my eight-foot full-size bed Tacoma in this parking area here and pull myself out successfully. And so I feel confident that that is something that people would be able to make work. I don't know if Sean or Ruben, who are actually at the property, have any confidence in this.
Would you like to say this is, would you like to say this is a lesbian?
Okay.
So why continue? You can look at this.
Oh, thanks. It is a farm road, right? Things like that, that's the reality of what we're dealing with. And I agree with many of your comments. I don't think there's a lot of alternative. One thing I will say is that I have quite a large SUV. I was able to do it without any concern. I backed out of that driveway and did exit the road and have an expedition max. It's quite, yeah, it smells like not great for the environment, but it's great for my family. My point is that it is, it will come with some trickery. The other point is that is the tasting room is, I think, 200 square feet.
Like the area in the, in front of LA.
The intention is for people to be able to, you know, to come, be educated, grab things, and to go. And so, you know, I, and there's, I know there's a comment originally around parking spaces and I think that the reality is like, there just needs to be parking spaces for, if there is people that show up. And at the end of my rambling, I, I don't disagree with many of your comments at all. I think there's just limitations, but it would have to be done with care. And I think no matter what you do, any of these spaces were wide in the road, you're going to have the same people that don't think they could pass. I don't, I don't know if making any massive changes to this is going to necessarily be a positive change overall to be farm and everything else. It's, it's not intended to be like a factory road, I guess, is what I'm trying to say. It's meant to be this quaint little in and out and go. And a lot of the idea was with the gravel, with, you know, the classic thing to hold everything gravel in place. And I think a lot of that put the intentions to keep it very farm. If you do a lot of these bigger changes, which would be become a factory at that point, which would really lose the aesthetic of the property.
So I want to point out again that what Sean said, which is the ability for density in this size space is very thin. It's a, it's beautiful, it's quaint, it's thoughtful, both the care to the property and care to the building. And it's not designed to have a lot of density. So it, I also really appreciated that the allocated areas for parking don't read like parking spaces. It's an extension of gravel that's going to be very carefully placed. It really feels very true to the agriculture in Hudson Valley. And I think they're giving extra space than what they would ever really need, which would provide some of that buffer. But, you know, you never know. The other thing is we talked a lot over there about signage options to just create some clarity should there be a higher density moment. And there's a bit of a turnaround to access at the end. So one scenario, which might naturally happen a little, the cars could be a slight slant, which creates this easy access and the turnaround. Sean's car is bigger than mine and he definitely got out without problem. My car is smaller, but I'm not as good of a driver and I got out pretty easy too. So, you know, is it perfect? No, but I think that the support of a small business with the very deep care of the agriculture and the very limited potential for high density in this space, I thought it was, they did a very careful job.
Okay. Anyone else?
How did you come up with the number of 26?
We have four people who do work for us and a maximum capacity of 20 guests. And so it was just.
And none of those guests are going to share a ride.
Addition.
I, I, I think in the town code, you can correct me if I'm wrong, the numbers that are given for the number of allocated parking spaces are stated as maximums. It's not the minimum number of parking that you have to have for that kind of a, of a business. And I did also check what I had said earlier in the prior meeting about agricultural use. And I was incorrect, it actually is very broadly defined for, to a lot worth of processing of agricultural goods on site. It doesn't necessarily have to be something that you move there on the site. But I, I think we have to understand that this, that leeway is given for agricultural use because we do value the agricultural nature of our community. We also have a very walkable village that is not really surrounded by a walkable, bikeable town. And this is yet another opportunity to invite people to come to our town with their cars and park at a site and then drive to another. And I, I wonder if there's a way to minimize the impact by reducing the number from 26? Or if you're, if there's a.
It's a, it's a very small areas. And I think, given the other concerns expressed about the idea of people's skill at parking or size of vehicles, but it's, it's hard for us to be like, everyone's going to park perfectly in a nine by 19 space. So having the 26 spaces is like the square footage that feels reasonable for the very modest guest flow that we're proposing at the site. I think eliminating parking spaces only creates a situation where you could potentially have more issues than the solutions.
Craig, I just want to point out, like, when I look at this site plan and I see all the little squares, it reads like parking spots. And when I was there, it really felt like an extension of gravel, which in my opinion, having that added strip, which wasn't very big, it's not like overwhelming. It just gives more maneuvering room to the existing car. I don't, so I think if they made less maneuvering rooms, even though they won't need the 26 spaces, it would be probably worse for the existing car set. Does that make sense?
One option to be considered is the planning board does have the right to de-parking and reserve, which means you don't have to put all the parking in up at the front. So you could talk about, say, putting in a certain number of parking spaces. The plan can still show up, but they'll be marked as parking and reserve and come later on if the demand is there for those parking spaces to be put in. It means you wouldn't do it all at once. You'd have to come back possibly do it later if you thought the demand was there, but it also would reduce your cost upfront without having to put those spaces in. So if you can still show them on the plan, maybe it's just the first half of them. You know, I'm looking at the parking standards that the town has and, you know, I'm just looking at, say, you know, service retail is two and a half spaces per thousand square feet. We're talking about about 800 square feet. So in, in reality, we're only talking about a handful of spaces that are required by code. But again, Craig's have kind of put down as maximums. So if, if there is a thought that this parking may be needed, they could stay on the plans, but maybe we don't do, maybe you don't do all front, maybe you do half. Maybe the closest to the structure first and put the other in reserve and the demand is there, it could always go in later. Again, it's, you know, it's gravel, it's not paved.
I have a question. They're not delineated, right? There's nothing, they are?
No, no.
Oh, okay. So I mean, there's no grates on the ground or anything. It is a gravel area. So if three people come Saturday and they all want to parallel park, they can do that, right?
That's, they, they can.
And so all we're talking about here is the size of the gravel area that's beside the driveway.
That's it.
And I see no reason to restrict it. You know, it's on the plan. I think we ought to let, let it go as, as presented.
That's the decision of the board at the end. That's, that's your discretion.
But if I'm correct, we have to continue the public hearing because we have not heard from the health department?
Oh, yeah, we don't have the department approval. Typically, you know, we don't do approvals without county health sign off. That has been passed by us.
I'm sorry, would there be additional requirement if the, to file again? If the pavement were changed from gravel to another type of pavement?
Yes.
So that would have to be filed?
If you did park in reserve, which says that you didn't plan on, if putting the spaces in delineating or using them, for instance, then that could just be done because it's on the plan and you say we need them, they would go in whenever, I think. But yes, if you're going to change it, pavement, absolutely, you'd have to come back. Now you're talking about a murky surface, more so than gravel.
But if we, if we've approved it, it would still have to be filed because of the change in material?
Yes.
It's concrete or forested and anything other than gravel.
Right, it's what being a quotes is gravel. So the only thing that might change, senior will prove it tonight, the only thing that might change the gaming requirements that County Highway has in connection to Salisbury Turnpike. I think that can be a condition to be cool, because we do that with other developments for commercial uses. Whatever counties get asked for, that's what the county needs. And I don't think the planning board needs to really worry about that. County Highway will be dealing with that. That would be the only thing that might change, but otherwise, yes, what's on the plans is on the plans. And that's, I think any change from that would require coming back.
That'll get maintained in the year round, it'll get clouded in the winter. The gravel is a somewhat reversible thing. So if you in years decide that you really don't need 26 parking spots, you can let some of them go back to gravel.
That's very much the thinking.
The planning board members.
I have to agree exactly with what Sean and Ruben said. I mean, this is, it's a very, for what you're going to do in the fall. It's not like a restaurant, you've made a reservation and they have a nice three, three-hour dinner, they're friends. I don't think so. It's, I think it's, I think it's another issue, probably.
Public. Is there anyone here from the public that would like to comment on this application?
Hi, I'm Michelle and Charles Kelso. We live at 16 Enterprise Room, which is directly next door to their neighbor. I think we just found out what it was. So that was great that we got the information. We know we've been carrying lots of construction going on for a while, so I'm kind of wondering. I think our biggest reason for being intentionally is just the concern of noise. So we live where we live because it's quiet. I don't want to live next to a retail establishment, very familiar with the noise that comes from that. And just concerned with the operating hours. We've seen these types of distilleries turn into venues where maybe there's music and music of that nature. So our concern overall is just really the noise level. And parking, which brings into consideration the number of parking spots, I guess, like you just discussed. So to me, when I read that, I was like, 26 parking spots, you know? Normally, there's not one person in a car. So 26 spots, if you have four people, you're talking 100 people. If you're talking five people, you're at 130 people. That elevates the noise level. So again, our concern, noise, traffic, that sort of thing.
The noise does, does act a little in that area.
Well, we're so close to it, we can literally see the barn from our deck, from our back of our house. So it's obviously right there next to us.
And you've had a chance to look at the plans?
I did look at the plans online, so I did kind of check that out a little bit. So seeing that there are, you know, the number of spots in, and I'm not concerned where they are, but I'm just concerned with the quantity of people that it brings.
And I certainly understand that that's an legitimate question. I guess I would also say, given the size of the tasting room, the thought that 100 people would be happily inside that, it kind of stretches the imagination.
Well, that was my concern too, because I was like reading and it said three, I think, three seats inside and 18 seats outside. So I was like, 26 parking spots, we need 21 seating spots.
Well, it's all, my understanding is that these are people coming and going. So they may not all be there at the same time. We have asked, and I think maybe Rachel would repeat some of the questions. We asked about whether this was intended to be an operation that continued through the winter? Was it something we asked specifically about lighting? Thinking about distilleries in late October or November or holiday? You indicated that it's not your intention to do that. So my understanding is the hours are limited and that this is not something that's going to be a wedding venue or the graduation party. And that's, those are the questions we have asked. And perhaps you want to repeat those answers for the record?
Yeah, our, our primary business is manufacturing. So we've been manufacturing the black currants of fur for the nationwide work and the tangerines for the last two, five years. First, it's a very, very small 400-foot car space. And this is just to transfer us to actually be in the operational condition. And like the tasting room is teeny tiny, you guys should come over and say hi to us and see the setup. It's like, it's very small. It's more meant for people to be able to engage with this, I kind of somewhat foreign and niche thing that we do and to really understand how it connects to the agriculture, how it connects to the land and be able to taste that. But it's really for like Saturdays, daytime operation, very small scale.
What are your hours of operation?
We're planning on like 12 to 7.
What, five, seven days a week?
No, on Saturdays.
Just Saturdays?
Yeah, like our intention is to just do, like I said, I'm there seven days a week for business, but I, we work there, like we make the labor there. So we can work in that state since.
So you're only going to be open to the public on Saturdays, if I'm understanding correctly?
That's our plan right now, yes. Yeah, it's not meant to be, like, you know the distilleries that you're talking about. I know how it conceived, I know a lot of the newer ones that are kind of area and they're much larger scale operations than the one that we're proposing at the site and so on.
That's our main concern.
Yeah.
Not knowing, you know, obviously, like I said, we've heard the construction going on, so we knew something was up, you know? But not knowing what it was until we got the paperwork, we were like, oh, a little concerned over that. Like I said, we live there because it's quiet. That was our choice and we just want that to continue.
All right. So if you've got some more questions to answer, we've had an invitation to visit and see the size of the space. We don't control the hours of operation, hopefully forward, so I'm not guaranteeing it for the rest of the life of the world. That will be the day she's open, but for now, I think that she's on the record as that's her intention. So anyone else from the public? Any other questions from you?
Where's that? I think we brought everything.
So, you're there seven days a week?
I'm always there. You're the house up through, like, the paths, right?
I move like grass on the outside.
I'd like to move along here.
See your saddle. I am, you know, I'm very like the property, because the property was originally in my family.
See, it is a family union, just as I thought. I'm going to try to move us along.
Yep, thank you so much for your-
Thank you.
Since we'll be women only, I just want to be on the record as, since we're continuing the public hearing to wait for the health department, you have an opportunity, should you have any other questions, to come back and ask them. If you, I'd encourage you to speak with Rachel and, you know, get any other questions answered one-on-one, but I just wanted you to know that.
Thank you very much.
Excellent. One other question. Well, what are your hours up here or there? Usually, we both work a lot.
Usually from 10 to 4.
10 to 4. Okay.
Are we able to also avail ourselves of the two-week extension? What the heck? I've lost control of the meeting, so I just- We can schedule it, and you can put as much pressure as you can on the health department. My understanding is they have some questions. I mean, the email that came from Dave, that I believe you were privileged to read, he has concerns about the changing use and wastewater flow and all of those things. So, it's not just a simple sign off. He's apparently indicating he has calculations he's got. We provided him with those calculations. We provided him with an engineering report. We've answered additional questions. I've been talking to him since February, so I would really love to hope that he could get a response to me. Well, let's just take the chance, and we'll schedule you for two weeks out, and we'll pray to the health department gods that they will be able to move this along. We've got a lot on their plate as well. Anyone else? Public? Anyone else? Planning board? If not, may I have a motion to continue the public hearing? Thank you, Michael. Thanks, Louise. All those in favor?
Could I possibly just take a moment and ask a question about the previous thing with the Bay Area Center?
I'm waiting. Please, in the side. For all the favors, we voted for the rest. What happened to it? Yeah, I have to continue the public hearing for the Rynnic Hotel. Let me do that for the public. I have a motion to continue the public hearing on the Rynnic Hotel until July 17th. Motion second. All those in favor?
My question is, is the issue that a primary use cannot be used as an accessory use? Is that the question?
No, it's true. You would use a primary use as an accessory use.
Okay, let's look at hotels. Hotels, that's a primary use. Restaurant, primary use. Hotels often have as an accessory use a restaurant. Country and two restaurants, the hotel aspect of it, the health spa aspect, that's a special form of use. The riding state is a special form of use. And your country and two are going to use a special term. The country and two allow all those as accessory uses. So, my point is, the primary use SVP is not invalid as an acceptable accessory use because it happens to help a person's own.
Okay.
You're a lawyer.
No, but my family did help you. She owns law offices. I think you make more money off lawyers than lawyers ever going to make off the bus.
All right. With that-
Thank you for your endorsement.
With that note, may I have a motion to move?
Second.
Thank you, everyone. See you in a couple minutes.
Hi.